More layer of something that we start and once you start it, you keep doing it. And somebody's got to have meetings, take minutes, post minutes.
Can I suggest, I think those are arguments that can and probably will be made at town meeting. Our question now is, do we keep it in?
We absolutely keep it in.
We need to keep it in, so the question is, do we have enough here or do we need to make changes?
Right, did my comment get in, I don't think my comment got in there though. So anyway, something to the effect of, as a condition of, in other words, in the effect of.
Could you share that with Kelly and then they consider it the next?
Sure, okay.
And it would be helpful probably to let people know, you know, the ADA coordinator that we currently have is the fire chief. And she's been doing it for quite a while and I think she's interested in maybe having another coordinator come on or this commission. It appears as if sometimes that this role gets confused. People say, why is it with the fire department? It is only with the fire department because the chief has the skills to do this role, but it has nothing to do with the fire department. It's a distinct.
And it could very well be the building inspector.
And it could be someone else.
Very well.
That's right. To let people know that these general issues are being addressed currently through our ADA coordinator.
Right, whoever it is, we'd still keep ADA coordinator with us, but for the size of our town, your point is that we're doing it and it fits for the size of our town. I think that's the.
Did you send these?
No, no, probably not.
I was gonna say that.
I was making some more changes as time went by.
I thought that it was probably after the fact.
Going to the next one if we're set, the special education reserve fund. It says reserve fund in the title, then it says revolving fund in the first paragraph, revolving fund in the second paragraph, and reserve fund in the fourth paragraph.
I know, I noticed that too and I didn't get it.
Balance life is wonderful, but.
I need to clarify that with town council.
So there will be one or the other, but not both.
If it's both, I need to explain why, because I thought there were two distinct and different types of funds.
Revolving fund applies.
Oh, I understand, I just don't know.
Right, I think it's gotta be a reserve fund. I don't think a revolving fund applies to special education.
So I just wanted to double check.
I agree.
Unless we're getting regular state and other monies.
Do you know, we're gonna wait for Scott to tell us about this or? I think it's worth it to have Scott tell us about this on Monday. Is that what you're saying, Kelly? Or should we try to discuss it now?
Yeah.
I mean, I know where that's coming from. Masco should be, so you're not there yet.
Okay, so you all know that our citizen petitions are printed as submitted and signed by 10 or more registered voters. So those are written here as received. I have clarified with town, or I've tried to clarify with town council. There was Article 36, free cash to debt service. It started out with caps. Town council took out the caps and I said, I just want to clarify. I thought we had to put it in exactly as it was given. So that would be a minor thing that I see. It's not that I ignored it. And I'll change it if town council says we can, but otherwise I typically stay and just put those articles in the warrant just as they're submitted to us.
So which one did you have?
Article 36, appropriate free cash.
I don't see any, the caps you're taking them off.
Right, is capped.
That's not the way they are in, oh.
It's a minor point and I'm clarifying it as my point. I didn't overlook it.
I made a change there. I made a change. Yeah, I agree with you with town council anyway. We don't have to keep it as submitted. And so I would take those caps out.
Like I said, I'm just waiting to hear back from them because I'd like to know for my own purposes.
Kelly, a question, the citizens petition concerning the zoning. It says a positive vote, I don't think reinstated dash, but again, if it was submitted that way, that's.
Yeah, you liked it that way, yeah.
Will reinstate the 93 vote. Did something overturn the 93 vote that we're back to voting on this?
Never got done. It was voted on and it dropped through the cracks because of several reorganizations of the planning board and it dropped through the cracks.
It's complex in a sense, right? Holger Luther, last night, last night?
Uh, yeah.
No, two nights ago, two nights ago. Was through the history of what happened from 1993, change in 2002, change in 2005 and how it worked. Cause he did forensics to come up with it.
When you say change in 2002 and 5, was there another vote?
There were other votes to change the thing. The summary would be that the 2000, the early 2000s are because of the government's change from standard industry codes, sick codes to NAICS, North American, North American industry classification system. By the way, kind of like NAFTA. It had to, they had to do that. So they changed it. We went from three digits to five digits. So we changed all these things and our old one was based on six. So we went to the NAICS, but that changed a lot of things. And so things that were under this, like this, were now spread out maybe here, but over here. And that's part of what happened with hospitals, nursing homes, clinics, mixing all those things up. Order of magnitude, that's what was going on. I can't explain the details of why.
But the intent was always there to have this 93 vote stand and it just got confused with the.
You can't, you cannot put yourself in the heads of somebody who sat there in 2005 and said, I know what was in 93, I agree with that and I'm trying to do the same. And Holger will say that, but you can try to do the forensics to see how things happen and how they forgot the reasons that something that was done and maybe, so it's complex. But Holger did provide the planning board with a sheet or two that lists some of those things that he was reading off. So hopefully those things are up on the web at some point. People can see those.
Okay, well, I'm sure someone will be there to explain this because.
They better.
There isn't much here to help people understand.
There'll be people there because there's a number of people in the church that have some concerns with this.
Okay, final two articles for the ATM warrant. There's Article 37, free cash to offset tax rate. This is a direct, it was intentionally categorized separately from the last warrant article. This one reflects the Johnny Brussel grant that we received, the land grant. And that was the town accountant has consulted with DOR in terms of wanting to make sure that we're sort of treating this separately. We're keeping it separate. The idea is that the town allocated through the capital exclusion, $500,000. Afterwards, we ended up getting the land grant reimbursement for $400,000. We also got some additional funding from the Green Belt so that our total amount of monies that is going back to offset the capital exclusion is that $405,190.
That answers my question then. There's some additional money from Green Belt?
Yeah, I think they donated an extra $10,000. I was making a big stink about all the legal fees and they sort of added it up at the end and threw us some more, some extra money, which paid the extra legal fees so that I didn't have to go for a reserve fund transfer. And it also left some additional funding there, so we'll just put that back, mold it all into that same article.
Okay, just a quick question going back to the citizens petition to move 400,000 to free cash. We have another article to move free cash. How, how is that going to work?
That is subject to further discussion. I'll be meeting with the chair of the FinCon to discuss what options are available and certainly talking with KP Law to see what options are available. We'd have to, you know, we'll have to be prepared to have some other options in our pocket. Which is one reason why the Article 38 is where it is on the warrant, to make sure that if anything happens throughout town meeting, that you've got, basically the last article is sort of the rounding article where you're able to allocate additional free cash. It helps at the end of the budget process. Usually that's to offset the tax rate.
So if, let's just say that the FinCon was going to recommend that 500,000 be removed from free cash to help offset the levy.
Yeah.
Because of the citizens petition, are they only going to put in 100,000 so that the net is.
They have that, yes. That's very good possibility.
Okay, and if they deem.
That assumes that they have at least an extra 400,000 or more to offset this if it were to pass.
And choose to spend it to, the key here is to reduce the debt service.
Right.
As opposed to reduce the tax rate or anything else directly. So that may be where they develop their opinion and be focused on that.
I'm just wondering, like, do we explain to people, keep in mind that we've got this one coming from the FinCon, you know, if they vote on that first and then the FinCon one comes up after with their rationale describing that.
The FinCon presents each warrant, so I'm sure they'll mention.
They will, okay. Is it possible then to?
Reverse it.
Reverse it so that they get to hear the FinCon.
No, 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 no. No, and this one.
Because you really actually.
We don't want to end up where the intent of the leaders of the town is to transfer 400 and there's an interpretation and we end up being, having a mandatory transfer of 800.
That's why I'm saying you don't want to.
That's why you want to have that. That's why you want to have that. The answer of the FinCon kind of just is, this is a citizen petition.
So if they want to adjust it and FinCon's real goal was $350,000, how can you adjust it after 400,000 has been voted down?
That's not what I'm worried about. I'm worried about the other way.
The other way being?
I just have a sense that that's not going to be a problem for the FinCon.
Okay, that they're at least thinking along the same lines, okay. And they can adjust on the fly based upon?
Well, just amended.
Don't give us the numbers.
You just amended, okay.
But the order, essentially what you're doing is you're, you've got to add, you know, you've got a balance scale and they're going to basically put beans on the scale at the end to make it balance depending upon.
Okay, I didn't realize they could adjust at that point because they put a number in here.
That's why you want to have it.
Well, remember, remember too, that even though we put all this information in our warrant packet, technically the only legal part of this that's required is really the opening and closing of these warrant articles. We, by history and tradition, also put in the motion, but that's always subject to change and that's always up to the FinCon. Typically, they'll introduce it and they'll say, you know, what we're about to recommend is different from what's printed in the warrant. However, what is here and what is in italics isn't really the legal portion of this. It's really to see if the town will. That's the legal ability of the town to make a legal decision and so everything else is sort of extra. So just so that we can get everything in everyone's hands as soon as possible. But it can be changed at any time. The motion on the floor is set by the FinCon.
Remind me, citizens petitions can be amended on the floor or not?
They can be amended on the floor, but they have to be voted down.
They have to be voted down to then.
They have to be voted down first to amend.
Brings another motion. And I'm sure, the thing that troubles me about this is what generally troubles me in citizens petitions. It's the way they write them. You know, so to me, what's really confusing is the words, "a total amount." And I know you have a preliminary decision, but and I know we'll have Lauren over to write with us. But can you please, please get, let's a real solid KMP view on those words.
Okay, which one in particular?
Usually it's the appropriate, the amount.
Yeah, so I don't, I, you know, sometimes, again, it's this thing of I read it in plain English, but there's a different statutory or judicial view on it. And so just the, so the question's, I like, that says a total amount, what if the FinCon wants to do more? Can they do that is one way where it comes up. The other is, well, Don Brussel's doing four right there. How's that? What is, another says, what's the interplay between 36, 37, and 38 as to total? Obviously, if 36 gets voted down.
Right, but also it's the motion on 36 by the FinCon that would determine the actual action. Assuming the FinCon makes its motion, maybe, I would assume they're not going to say a total amount, like.
Words are suited with this.
That can't be changed.
Yeah, but the article, the article can't be changed, but that's different from the motion which is brought to the floor.
You can make a different motion than the petition.
We can make a totally different motion. Well, first of all, a motion, no action, that's, do not do it. But yes, you can make, the FinCon can offer any motion that they want to that, to that, to any order.
Right, and where it says to take any other action related thereto is basically our ability, our legal ability to twist.
So if they explain that carefully, then, then that could be resolved in the explanation.
But that was one of the questions I've asked them about. I think we need to have like a separate discussion.
Yeah, or I'd be happy with this.
We need to make sure we got.
Here's a couple of points in regards to your amending a citizens petition. If indeed the finance committee votes no action and it passes no action, it's dead.
It's a dead date.
Nothing else, yeah.
However, however, once, once this, once this article comes up and the FinCon, yeah, if they vote no action, if they vote action.
They have to amend it.
They don't, but they could take it just as it is, but somebody else could amend it.
I think we get confused between the motion and the recommendation.
The recommendation, most likely unless the recommendation is going to be for no action.
But that's what the motion, I think the petition's the motion.
The recommendation.
The petition.
No, the motion is what the FinCon says.
They say that the motion is their recommendation, if I recall.
That's right.
And so we're voting on their recommendation to see if the town is a description.
To take no action.
If they say no action and the Free Kong recommendation is, oh, and that's voted down.
Then that has to be voted down in order to be amended.
Then it can be amended.
Then someone can amend, yeah.
It's very confusing.
If you don't want it to pass and the FinCon says no action, then you voted the affirmative.
Then someone has to bring forward.
If the FinCon recommendation is to take no action on Article 36. That has to be, and they lose, then you go to, you go to, let's see. There's no need to amend the article. The article then.
A new motion is made.
A new motion is made and it's voted on to pass because obviously those people that voted not to go with the FinCon recommendation will vote to take positive action.
Can be stated in any way except as long as it's within the scope.
Yeah, it has to always be within the scope.
Within the scope on the time you.
Yeah, it does have to be within the scope. I'm not sure why we'd be, we're not, we're only talking about transferring funds from free cash. That's the scope of the product.
I really am worried, concerned about the words, "a total amount."
Okay, well, I agree with you there.
And how that impacts, the more of a reach we can get, the better.
The other thing I would suggest here, and I know this goes, we need, we need to talk to the town clerk and come up through the elects as a process to bring citizens petitions to the warrant article. In other words, there should be a time when a citizen files a petition, it's reviewed by either someone that knows what they're doing, so that these kind of edits don't have to be required.
Before it's filed.
Before it's filed. So what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is that the town needs to set a structure.
We had that discussion already a little bit about how much we're going to look at and provide legal advice.
You can offer advice, you can make changes. You can offer advice which may resolve issues that otherwise would prevent.
I had a discussion recently with, somebody who put this in, so here's the reason.
That's a good point.
The town does not want to be in a position where we spend money on legal fees to help someone do a citizen petition. We could have no citizen petition, one per year. You could have 50 people who wanted to put them in. We're not, we're not in a position to try to do legal things. It's up to whoever wants to come in with a petition to work it out. They have every right to do it amongst themselves. They can all talk with selectmen. We represent them. They can ask us for thoughts. We can offer our thoughts, not legal advice. They can go and hire an attorney, municipal law attorney especially, to help them with writing it out, whatever it is. In my mind, it is inappropriate for the town and the taxpayers to spend any money on a citizen petition. Because a citizen petition is.
But you could say that citizens' petitions need to be filed by January 30th.
Yes, we do. We said.
And then you can review the petition.
Well, see, once the thing is signed, the 10 people signed the 50, they signed a certain thing.
I hear what you're saying. You're right. Once they sign the petition, those 10 people are signing what's written.
What was written on it. And you can't, and once the clerk stamps it, it's there.
We had the same conversation when the, trying to pull the, you know, the special town meeting we did to, about the town hall, trying to stop that before it, and it was the same thing. There were real questions around the structure of the request. We had to vote on it as it was. And it was genuine concern that if it had happened, that it left an awful lot of messy legal stuff, but we couldn't change it, I recall.
Right, but you can change it on town floor with a final motion. I mean, the people can, can pick something.
Plastic bag.
Plastic bag, which we did. And we worked with a petitioner.
Yeah, a lot, right, yeah.
Do we have any reports coming before town meeting? Is there a government committee that's going to?
I talked to the chair of the government committee, I want to say, yesterday, and I suggested that he call you.
Oh, okay.
And yes, my suggestion was that he, it's not like the report isn't going to be ready for another year, but I thought a big idea for him to give a status report for that.
Okay, any other reports that are coming before on the, on Article 14?
Not that I know of.
I haven't heard, oh, I'm sorry. The question was about reports?
Yeah, like Article 14, to hear our reports.
Yeah, I haven't heard from anyone. Typically, we would ask, like, I think we did ask the town hall building committee, but nobody's come forward and asked for any more time.
And the other question I would have on that, does it make any sense to go over the research that was done in having the restaurant tax to do that explanation in the report? In other words, or do you want to do it right before the article?
Part of the article, I think. I think that makes, it's really not a report because it was not a report that was, you could do a report.
I don't think anybody did any research. It sounded like somebody did some research.
Yeah, but that's part of the article.
But that to me is very similar to the, when we did the marijuana overlay, cultivation overlay thing. We ended up having all of that conversation during the warrant article rather than a preliminary report.
It's a good point though.
Can I just go back to Johnny Brussel one? The wording in here talks about being taken out of free cash. There's been some question about with Johnny Brussel money. Is it, is that accurate to say free cash?
It kind of, it ended up in free cash.
Yeah.
The grant.
It is in free cash now. Okay, thank you.
It's just reserved.
So it's part of, wait a minute, it's part of the 2.2 million we got from the state as certified free cash, right? The free cash that was certified on January 13th.
Was it part of that total that was certified?
If it's free cash, the only free cash is that.
I just know that DOR has worked with the town accountant and town council has reviewed everything. There's no issues. If your question is, where is the money, it's in a reserve fund that is set aside so that we keep it separate. It's not part of the $2.2 million of free cash. That's what I understand.
There you go.
And is that wording right that we're?
No, it's free cash.
Town council reviewed the wording. That's what they said.
I'm not sure it would be free cash either if it's in a reserve fund.
No, you can put free cash in a reserve fund, like when we got the grant from this week.
That is appropriated. Yeah, once you do it, it's appropriated. I agree.
I will ask Catherine to clarify.
Just because of what, it's in the, here, it's important to be accurate.
And then just a quick question, it might not make any difference because it's all kind of coming from the same place, but looking at the citizens petition about the 400,000 to apply to the current debt service and then looking at Article 37, we're saying this fund is intended to offset tax impact related to the approval of the capital exclusion, blah, blah, blah. Does it matter where they say it has to be applied?
In the citizens petition, it does.
It's coming from the same pool, the operating budget that's funding the debt service, so.
You're talking, I'm sorry, you're talking about the Article 38?
At 36 and 37, you know, each one specifies it's either offsetting the tax impact or.
36, I think is a real problem. I, maybe it's not very clear to me. I cannot explain what we would do. That may be good because it gives us some options, but I think it's very confusing. I'm sorry, I need to go to the listening session, so I apologize for leaving.
Well, you better get going.
I'm going to ask one favor. Steve, if you would, on that camera, I'll show you where, just push it and after the meeting, just push it and leave the camera in here. I'll get it tomorrow morning.
But first go right up to it, Steve.
Smile, make faces.
Then he's going to have to edit the end and he hates that.
Are we all done?
No, we still have minutes and I don't think we're through.
Well, I wanted to talk about Article 34.
Go ahead.
I got a call from Jamie O'Brien, like a day before that citizen petition hit the street. And he was concerned about the possibility that the definition of exotic animals could grow to include pot-bellied pigs, chickens and stuff like that, okay? I read this article the way it was written and I talked to Martha before it was written. I said, make sure that you do it correctly and completely so there's no question. I read through this and it's all well enough defined, what an exotic animal is. It eliminates domesticated animals, it eliminates farm animals, so they're not, shouldn't be a concern to him. The question I have for you, I think this should eliminate his concern. Can I take a copy of that citizen petition to him?
Yeah.
It's public record if it's been filed.
It's a done deal and I'm going to tell him it's a done deal.
I mean, the only issue that I see here, at least in the recent time I've been at the fair, are elephants. And I know that's what prompted this.
That's what prompted this, yeah.
But the others are, what's happened is the petitioner has gone and looked at what has been put in other places. And it's to prevent the cages on wheels. They often used to see Barnum and Bailey on the case.
I don't think he should have a problem with the way this is written because I think it's pretty clear.
But it's okay. The best thing to do is just hit this button, stop recording. Just push it in and it's blinking over here and it'll stop blinking. Thank you.
Elephants and the camel.
Robinson's pigs wouldn't.
No, he didn't have any problem with elephants because he said, it's going anyway, okay? He said, I'm concerned about the fact that the definition of exotic could grow.
Robinson's racing pigs wouldn't be able to come back.
I don't know, basically, I'd like to see.
I'll talk to him and give him a copy. We all done with the warrant for today?
Can I ask, can I ask, can I mention one other potential article? It is an employee compensation study. On Monday evening, I went to the FinCon meeting and what started out as a nonchalant comment turned into a discussion about non-union salaries and how we're overpaying everyone. So I suggested that, rather than continue to talk about it, if there was support, we could bring forward in an article to appropriate funds to do a study that basically looks at what we've accomplished in the same five years, to have a consultant come in to do a study that not necessarily all the level of detail that we did the last time, but really looks at what we've done and sees and evaluates whether or not we should be making changes, updates to it, if we should be tweaking, maybe.
So this is a housekeeping thing.
No, it's more than housekeeping. It's looking at five years later. It's been five years since we did the plan. Let's look at it, see if it's still working for us. Is it still financially sustainable?
It's a cleanup.
Yeah, I mean, is there, you know, could there, I mean, I have lots of ideas on how we can maybe tighten it up a little bit, but I'd rather, if people are supportive of funding a study, I'd much rather have us be looking at concrete information pulled together by an outside consultant than to have this ongoing discussion which really kills morale around here, to be honest with you. And I'd much rather just have the facts in front of us and if we're being overpaid or underpaid or our employees aren't being paid appropriately, let's have someone from the outside come and do an analysis and let us know what their recommendations are so that this board can make some decisions moving forward, rather than have, you know, the end of each FinCon meeting turn into, you know, those non-union people. I just, I just think it would be much more proactive if we could put this on the table. I think they're receptive to it.
We don't have it on, we don't have it on here now.
No, I did a draft. I took information from the last time.
I saw it somewhere.
It's in the, it's in your package as it says sample article for the employee compensation study. I took the base wording from the one that we did five or six years ago and I just, I did, this is very long and I can, I can dumb it down. I understand that. I just didn't want to.
What did that cost fire ship issue, I mean?
More than 10,000.
Oh, it's more than 10,000?
Well, actually, the warrant article was for 10,000, but remember, I thought it cost more than that. But they did job descriptions. They don't need job descriptions. more than that, but they did job descriptions, they don't need job descriptions, we need a survey. We need them to do a market survey, we need them to look at the plan and work with us to come up with, you know, to really assess what we've done in five years and should that be updated? And just to revisit it, to update it, I have a quote from the same consultant, HRS. We can certainly offer that scope to two other agencies to see if there's anyone else who could do it the same or cheaper, but I figured rather than to talk about it, if we could put this on the table and people can decide to fund it or not, that now would be the time to do it because if we don't do it now, we're going to miss out on another year of discussion of this topic. So anyway, I'm putting that out there because I don't want it to come as a surprise to you if you hear more about it at FinCon, but also because we're running out of time for the warrant, I wanted you to be aware, sort of where it came from and how it got here.
Let me ask a question. I would sort of normally expect this kind of, I'm so surprised to see it as a separate article. I would sort of see this as part of the administrative function of an organization that is aiming to maintain, you know, a fair and appropriate compensation thing and so on. And I'm just wondering if, if we're going to get this done at all, does it have to go town meeting? I'm not against it, I also don't want to hide it from folks, but it seems like an odd thing to put into a warrant article.
Well, I just assumed we did it five years, six years ago?
Yeah, I just don't, I'm just, you know, I wasn't on the board then, so I may be out of step on that one.
Well, I mean, ten thousand is a lot just to add to the budget, so that's, and it's also a one-time expense. Granted, it may come up in five. I mean, it's recommended that you do a study probably every five or so years anyway, but because it was a topic and it's sort of, I wanted to sort of point out the potential that, you know, if we don't do it this year, we can do it next year, but the discussion really was about, is it excessive to be offering a two percent COLA in step advancement for people who are performing and are meeting goals? And rather than have that discussion go out there without any rational or technical expertise or analysis, I just thought I could put this on the table and allow folks to make a decision if they think that it's worthy of moving forward. Otherwise, we have a plan that's been voted by the town, was voted five years ago, implemented under budget and is sort of, it's in the, it's in the personnel bylaw. So that's what we follow, that's what we do and apparently people are sensitive to it, so just in acknowledgement, I want to put this forward.
You can talk about that one, do?
Yeah, just a thought to, thinking about, obviously people are the largest piece of our budget. Is there something similar being proposed for the union side if we're talking about this from a non-union perspective so that all employees within the town are?
Well, typically, typically, well, first of all, that's a double-edged sword because I remember the last time going through our negotiations and having them say, well, we're not going to do anything yet because we're going through the compensation study to tell us we're underpaid so we can get more of a raise.
You can't win because if it comes in saying you're overpaid, the union's not going to back down.
Right.
And if it comes in it's higher, then they're not going to ask for anything less than that.
To answer your question directly, I think that the union take care of themselves because you renegotiate every time.
And they also have people up in Boston to tell them.
Yeah, but our, our are saying they're overpaid now or comparable or underpaid or we doing that analysis just like on the non-union side?
This analysis takes into consideration our classification plan and our pay grid and the personnel rules and regs. So it's sort of a combination of both and the classification will say, okay, what's the general relevance? You have your non-unions, but you also have your union employees. You look at title, you look at classification, you look at career growth, there's, so it's sort of mixed together. The focus of this would be looking at our pay structure, the pay grid that was, was basically totally revamped five years ago, making sure it's still in check. Are we being marketable, where are we?
Sure, I just, if you look at the big picture, the non-union piece is very small and it's, you know, if you're going to spend some amount of money.
It's all folded to classification. The classification will show you, here your non-union and here your union and they align them so that you know where it's coming.
As well, so can you vote?
In a larger screen, scheme, yes. That doesn't mean that we're going to have our, the consultant go around town and ask what all the police officers are making all around us necessarily. Maybe they will, but the aim is to look at the grid that we've designed and the structure.
Your study, the one that you're proposing, but since we're in negotiation.